Gentlemen, it's seven o'clock. Will you join me with a pledge of the flag, please?
A bubble office.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Except planners.
Yeah, thank you. Motion to approve or revise the minutes?
So move.
Revise or approve?
Approve.
A second?
Second.
First, a second, and a third. Items on consent agenda will be the Creekside Place Apartments. This is quasi-judicial, so if anybody's going to testify, would you please stand and be sworn?
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Who's presenting for you guys today? Oh, you lucky devil, you. Good evening. It's yours.
Yeah, good evening. For the record, Stan Bowling, County Planning Director. This request that's before you all this evening is for conceptual site plan approval. And what that means is that some of the general parameters of the project are being approved, the conceptual layout is being approved. This is a permitted use. It's just a straight multifamily, a use in a multifamily zoning district. You all usually see conceptual plans when there's a special exception use involved. It's not the case here. It's a permitted use. So what that means is that the conceptual plan gets approved conceptually tonight, if you also choose, and then later, with more details, a final site plan would come back and you all would see that. So there's actually two steps to this, and this is the first step. Let me just go through a PowerPoint of the conceptual plan. This site is located essentially between West Wabasso and the Sebastian Highlands, located on the east side of 66th Avenue and Schuman Drive, and on the west side of 64th Avenue. On the site that's shown is outlined in red, and it's zoned RM6 residential multifamily up to six units per acre. In fact, all the lands in the unincorporated area of the county surrounding it have the same zoning. You may recognize that last year, a project was approved on this site. That site plan was never released, and that project's basically gone away. So this new project application would supersede that, basically starting from scratch. Wanted to show you on this aerial a little bit more of the context of the site. You can see the site in yellow on this graphic. Wanted to point out some of the distances here, the Sebastian Highlands, here are these planted lots you can see, and just off the edge of this aerial is the intersection of Barber Street and Schuman. That's approximately 1,400 feet north of where this site entrance is, the entrance to this project site that's on 66th Avenue. And then it's about 3,000 feet all the way down to the County Road 510-66th Avenue intersection. You can see 64th Avenue, which is referenced in the plan. There's a connection point to 64th Avenue and the main connection to 66th Avenue. 64th is a local street that goes through the West Wabasso community. You can see most of the homes that are in the West Wabasso communities a little bit to the south of this particular site. And a little bit further east, this is a driveway that goes to a park and baseball field. That's close by. This is an outline from your packet of the site plan layout itself, and essentially there are two connection points. This main driveway coming off of 66th Avenue that will serve this project, and there's kind of a semicircle loop road going around the eastern and southern portion of the site. You'll see that there are nine multifamily buildings around this kind of semicircle, last one over here closer to 64th Avenue, and then a clubhouse. And within this kind of ring that this design proposes, there's a wet stormwater management area that will have littoral zones planted around it, meeting our newer littoral zone lake requirements. The main entrance will be here off of 66th Avenue. Also, I want to point out, and you can see this a little bit better in your packet, there are stub outs that are planned for this driveway to the north and to the south. So essentially, this driveway will serve the subject project, which is 152 multifamily units, and also a vacant site to the north that is owned by a church, and we believe we'll see at some point in the future a site plan for a church to develop on that site. And then a vacant residential site to the south. So this will actually become a shared facility here. With the traffic study that was approved with this project, a southbound left turn lane on 66th Avenue-Schuman into this entrance is required and will be provided, as well as a northbound right turn lane coming into the same entrance. And again, there's a secondary full connection to 64th Avenue that's proposed. And you just kind of see down here in the southeast corner of the project site, 64th Avenue is paved to approximately this point where I have the cursor right now. And so when this connection is made with this project, the 64th Avenue, that'll extend the pavement a little bit past their connection point, and it'll essentially go up to where I was showing you earlier on the aerial, that roadway that goes east to the park. Also, I wanted to point out a couple things why I had this particular graphic up, that there's a very small amount of French along 66th Avenue for this site. There's a sidewalk requirement here, looking for them to, the developer, to escrow money for that, so that the timing of this sidewalk segment can be coordinated with eventually improvements to four lane, 66th Avenue-Schuman, that is now under design. Also, I wanted to point out that with respect to the sidewalk requirement and paving requirement for 64th Avenue, 64th Avenue extends to the east of the site here is unpaved, but it really, there's really no uses to the north off of 66th Avenue to speak of, and so there's just a requirement for escrowing for future paving of that, this segment right here. The other thing that I wanted to point out, we went into some of the detail of this in the staff report. We've been coordinating with representatives of the West Wabasso community, and one thing that they really want is a sidewalk along 64th Avenue, south down to 510. And so this developer is willing to work with the county to construct that sidewalk as part of this project to the south from their entrance driveway, and then the county would take on the obligation to actually, in the future, when needed, put in a sidewalk along the east boundary of this site. And that would get the West Wabasso residents an improvement, and also I think it probably makes some sense for any residents of this project would also have the benefit of that pedestrian connection down to 510. And there is also a pedestrian system that's proposed with this project, which would connect a sidewalk out to 66th Avenue and run a loop around and catch every one of these buildings and clubhouse, and come around and serve all the buildings with pedestrian access. This is just a depiction of where the stormwater management is found, a little bit less than five acres in size, as proposed. This graphic shows the buffering that's required between multifamily, and since there are single-family uses, even though it's a multi-family, there are some single-family uses around kind of the eastern, the southern, and the southwestern boundary. There's a 25-foot wide type B as in boy buffer with a six-foot opaque feature required. I do want to just kind of point out that there are substantially larger areas in 25-foot width along the southwest and the southern area, so actually it will be more buffering and separation, but the minimum will be planted along there. Along the center and roadway, there's a local road, thoroughfare, planned road, same buffer type required along here, and that's 15 feet wide. The opaque feature minimum height required there is four feet. We'll probably be looking at a four-to-six-foot opaque feature along that particular stretch. This shows, and there are some significant environmental issues that have to be addressed on this site, and the applicant is working with the state and federal agencies and environmental planning staff to do that. This green area represents upland scrub jay habitat that's proposed to be preserved. In fact, the footprint of this development is actually a bit smaller than the last development plan that was presented last year, and that certainly is a lot easier to be done with either PD or with a multifamily project like this, where you can get used to buildings and stay away from these areas. So what's proposed here is to preserve a little over five acres of upland habitat that's been identified as being within scrub jay and overtorus habitat area. The upland areas on the site that have been identified and are proposed for development are generally up in this kind of northern finger of the roadway improvement. The light blue areas show wetland areas, existing wetland areas that are to remain, and this orange area is the one part of the eastern wetland that is proposed to be filled with this project, as described in the staff report. Again, just a recap of the improvements in the conservation items with this conceptual plan. There'll be a five-foot dedication to right of way along the site's eastern frontage for 64th Avenue. That's without compensation. Sidewalk construction, as I summarized earlier, from the kind of the southeast corner of the site down to 510 through the West Wabasso area, escrowing for future sidewalk along 66th Avenue with construction of the internal sidewalks. There is a significant amount of green space, almost 62 percent, including conservation areas, but also open space areas along the south boundary and the southwest boundary of the site itself. State's recommendation is that the planning and zoning commission grant conceptual site plan approval for Creekside Apartments with the conditions listed in the staff report. Again, just want to emphasize that if the project moves forward and conceptual plan approval is granted, that there'll be a final site plan with more details you all will see at some point in the future. Glad to try to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for staff?
Can you define open space and the conservation space for us?
Sure. I'll go back to this map here. The open space definition that we have in county is, first of all, it counts as green open space. It could be forested, wetland areas, and a certain percentage of open water bodies that are being created can count for open space, but we limit that to 30 percent of the open space. That way someone can't have most of their open space with really blue space. And so that's the formula that county uses.
So what is then the scrub jay habitat and the overtorus acreage of that?
The acreage of the upland area that's being preserved in the habitat is 5.31, and that's roughly represented here in the green area. These lighter blue areas are the wetland areas. They have, they're saving 0.55 acres of wetlands in these light blue areas, and this orange area is 0.43 acres of existing wetlands that they're proposing to fill, but mitigate for.
Do we know how many scrub jays are on the?
I'd have to defer to the applicant to give some details about the survey, and one thing I will mention is that when we get comments back, or when the applicant gets comments back on the survey information from the agencies, environmental planning staff will take that into account in the final site plan that comes into review. But the applicant may have someone here that could get into some more details on that.
Would the applicant like to come forward and see if he can answer the question? Good evening. Your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Stephanie Savela with Biotech Consulting. Our office is at 1717 Engineering Boulevard.
Thank you.
In 2004, when Biotech found the scrub jays, originally there were three scrub jays there. In New River County Conservation Land Manager, they track trained the scrub jays for two years, and in 2006, they tagged all three of the scrub jays. In 2007, there were two scrub jays there. The third, probably the fledgling, was no longer there, and they haven't found that one since. In October 2007, there were three scrub jays there, and two of them were the original parents, and then the third one was a non-banded fledgling. And then this past May, there were still the three scrub jays there, two of the non-banned and one non-banded.
Have they been able to find the nests at all?
Yes.
Do you know where they are located?
Yes. The 2007 scrub jay nest was in the southwest quarter of the single family home site. The others for the last two years, the 2007, 2008, they were offsite to the west. And this past 2008, they had two nests, and both those nests were offsite to the west.
Any other questions for staff?
I have a map if you'd like to see where they were, GPS.
Sure. Oh.
Why don't you put that on the overhead so the public can see it also? That's the term "public" meaning. At least they have a producing pair there. These two.
The two yellow, right there at the bottom here, is the nest from 2007, and so up here is the first nest from 2000, this past May. And a couple weeks later, they made a second nest, which was still in this offsite area.
So that is on the property of the church, is that correct?
I don't have the parcel boundaries on there, but possibly.
Looks as though it would be.
It may be, and if it is, I think it's probably on the northern portion of the church site.
And when and if they build, they'll have to comply with?
Yes, that's correct. And I also understand in speaking with all the boys, the general planning chiefs, that there's, the county is looking at possibly acquiring some of that, the habitat area. If that happens, that would actually be contiguous to what this developer's proposal.
Oh, excellent. Any other questions for our applicant? Our specialist? Bob, how long does this hold for this, when we grant this conceptual plan approval? How long do they have to construct this site? Five years?
No, this will be, this is a multifamily site, and we're looking at a conceptual approval tonight, and this will be a one-year approval.
One year?
In one year. They'll have to come back and get their regular site plan.
Okay.
That will also be good for a year, with the provision to be extended for a year.
Okay.
And anytime they get a building permit, as long as they keep that building permit active.
Live.
The project stays active.
Okay.
Another question. Would it be possible to get a deed restriction on cats for the apartments?
I think that would be something, they're going to have to get U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service approval because of the scrub jays, and in essence, I think they're going to have to do an individualized HCP habitat conservation plan. And U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service will be, I think, putting any appropriate conditions on. I don't think we can really put conditions since this is a regular site, but that is a good idea, because cats are.
Keep the cats out of it.
The homeowners association, the apartments association.
But why couldn't the county put a requirement like that?
Our legal, legal down here, let him see if he can.
There's none in our site plan warrants that allow for such a regulation to exist, and since there's nothing special about the district of site plan, probably.
But you have a federally listed species.
It's their ball.
I think you were talking more about having, you know, better regulations for scrub jays, but there's not any regulations at this time. We don't have.
We could put them in.
That's a legislative process that's certainly attached, but for now, this is a quasi-judicial site plan application.
Yeah, it might be something we're going to look at to put on our list, change, or as something we want to add to the codes, but for this site plan, we'd be limited. Does the applicant have anything they'd like to say? Are you going to be the silent partner tonight? Good evening.
This is Joe Dibl with Sholki Dibl and Sonder. Just if you have any questions. We're going to sort of look into deed restrictions on cats. The way we have this designed, the majority of the buildings are to the south and east away from this area, whether we need to fence it or something along that property line where the buffers are. I don't know if that's a solution to, so.
Do you know of any constraints that are going to be placed on you by the federal government? Have you spoken with them at all?
I believe so, but we haven't heard anything, so we're just trying to get conceptual funding for them.
When you come back, let us know what they've asked you to do, okay?
Of course.
So you can educate us also.
Please.
We'd like to know, in case, if they don't cover, we'd like to put in our list with something to possibly add some codes out there for, okay?
May I ask you a question? Have you ever had that restriction placed on any project yet?
No, the majority have just been either single-story or something. I've never heard cats.
Thank.
But, you know, the majority of the projects on that scrub jay habitat.
Yeah.
I have a question for you on the driveway from, leading from 66th Avenue.
How did I know this was coming?
No, actually, I met with staff, with Chris Moore for quite some time, so I'm pretty satisfied. I'll notice of the staff, except one. On the exit coming out of the project onto 66, you've got a northbound right turn lane and a southbound left turn lane. Do you, and we kind of, I asked them this question a little bit earlier, but we didn't go into it. Do you have room for two lanes there, one for stacking for the left turn and one for stacking for the right?
Yes, that's not a problem.
Okay.
For our site plans in the middle. I'll meet with Chris about that, but I don't see that being a problem.
And I know this probably isn't going to be your problem, but when the church comes in and they use that stub out, I think we're going to see a problem at that point in time.
Yeah, with the stub out, depending on if they come in with their plan, we can obviously move that farther back to add stacking lanes, but I don't see that being a problem. And you control that when they come in anyways.
Right. But you have room to do that now, okay?
We have that whole stretch of roadway to do.
Okay. So you can do the lines for left turn and right turn. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have nothing.
Thank you, sir. Good to see you again. Any discussion amongst the board? Do I hear a motion?
Over, bro.
I have an approval, but George?
Second.
And a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously. Lots of enthusiasm there, really looking. Thank you. Commissioners matter is the next item. Anybody have anything they'd like to bring up?
Yes, I do, and that's probably why Chris is here. Stan, can you put this map on the overhead that's from the biotech section of the last application? When I was looking through the traffic report on Sloss Creek, I was looking for concurrency on Barber, and I noticed that Barber Street is not even on the report, and I talked to Chris about it, and it's because Barber Street is not on the concurrency management system. And could you move it just down a little bit so we can see Barber Street? Thank you. You can see from this overhead how Barber Street is a main thoroughfare.
Yeah, I'll make it clear out of 512.
Absolutely. This is a north-south feeder road for the city of Sebastian. And as you know, from the number of projects we've seen come before us in this area, we're starting to impact Barber. But Barber is not on our concurrency plan, so we cannot say to somebody, you know, guys, yeah, if you're going to put more traffic on there, and it is close to capacity, you're going to have to help improve the road, which is only fair. And I've spoken to growth management for the city of Sebastian. I've spoken to a couple of city council members, and they are interested in having this placed on the concurrency management system. I did not go into detail with them the ramifications that the city could incur by doing this. I mean, there are advantages and there are disadvantages to both sides. So growth management was going to get ahold of Chris and ask Chris, you know, talk with Chris, and I was hoping that Chris might do a presentation to the city council of Sebastian, so they could make a decision as to whether or not they wanted to be, have Barber Street on the concurrency management system. And I was just kind of hoping that maybe we, if you all are in favor of this, that we send some, something to the board of county commissioners that says if the city of Sebastian wants this on the concurrency management system, that we will back that up. We agree with that process. And it's like, there's nothing in your packet. I didn't even, wasn't even going to bring this up tonight, but I did speak with growth management yesterday, so I don't know if there's any discussion from the commissioners here.
Well, I agree with you wholeheartedly. Barber Street's a major thoroughfare coming through there. I don't know, Chris, how does a street get placed on the management system? How do you qualify that?
Most of the, in fact, all of the major collectors and art materials in the county are included in our concurrency management system. I'm sorry, an intermission. Chris Moore, system publicly excluded. Like I said, the major collectors and art materials in the county are all in there. Now, inside the cities, and if you look at the list, you'll see many roadways within the city of Bureau Beach that are also included in there, and it's because we manage concurrency for the city of Bureau Beach. We do not manage concurrency for the city of Sebastian. We have an interlocal agreement with the city of Bureau Beach. We share building departments, we issue building permits to the community of development. We have no such interlocal agreement with Sebastian. Now, that's not saying that we couldn't. And if you look, there are some roadways, some Sebastian streets that are already included in our concurrency management system, like Schuman. But the reason they are is that because they directly connect to County Road, 66th Avenue becomes Schuman, and so we track the traffic on Schuman all the way over to US 1. Barber Street is totally included in the city of Sebastian. Now, we could add it, but I think that the pressure to do that, or the request to do that, should really come from the city, because they stand to be very much affected by this. We do perform counts on Barber every year, and some of our peak hour comments are showing that Barber as a two-main street is getting close to capacity in the peak hour. So if you start to manage concurrency with Barber, it wouldn't take very much more traffic to show the need for a four-lane Barber Street. And the city would need to.
Whether or not, yeah, whether or not the city wants to be anointed or not is the question. Is that what you're telling me?
That's for sure.
Yeah.
The city would have to make up their mind whether or not they, you know, wanted the county to approve more projects that put more trips.
Well, the city has been very cooperative in the last few years, and any new project that comes into the city, they've been requiring a traffic impact study and turning that study over to us to review. And we've been applying county LDRs, traffic on, even though the project's in the city. But again, there are some roads like Barber Street that are not managed as far as concurrency.
Bob?
Yeah, I'm Bob Tilling, County Community Development Director. The, just like us, the county, the city has a responsibility to actually implement concurrency. So I don't know what they're doing. You know, Chris is indicating that they, the city is requiring traffic studies, but to implement concurrency, you have to reflect development impacts on your system. You have to show the traffic when they're vested, and then you have to get out of the system when the project is CO. So it's pretty complicated, but state law requires that the city be doing that.
I know it's complicated, but I do know that Rebecca Grohl from the city of Sebastian Growth Management has been working with Chris on concurrency and on traffic counts, and so I see this as a good marriage for the county and the city together.
But that's only one step, doing a traffic study and looking and seeing if it meets concurrency. If you don't add those to your database, it's worthless.
And that's why the city, I think, needs to have a presentation on the pros and cons of this. of this.
So you can get her to request a presentation from Chris, then?
I think Chris and Rebecca will probably be in, I mean, yeah, will probably be in touch.
Right. I mean, we would have to look at all aspects of concurrency and--
Yes. The city may--
Right now, we're looking at it in a very spotty manner. We're looking at traffic studies. We're looking to see if certain intersections, if they're significant, are operating okay. But there's no overall concurrency management, I believe, being done in Sebastian. So it would take some--
Some legislative act? Or is it, it wouldn't require a legislative act, would it? I mean, they just need to show the interest, or?
Well, first of all, they'd have to show an interest in having a system that manages concurrency similar to what we do, showing vested trips, traffic counts, and that kind of thing.
So what you're telling us is we need to, there's nothing "we" as a group, a sitting board can do.
Well, I think the interest in this comes from Sebastian.
Yeah.
Initiate the initiative.
Interlocal agreement?
Pardon me?
Yeah, it'd have to be an interlocal agreement between the county and the city. And that would have to be initiated by the city, is what Chris is telling us. That sounds--
Because they're, the responsibility for managing concurrency in the system lies with the city, lies with the city, not with the county.
Why don't you get Rebecca to hit the council up there with that possibility of--
I said, I think Chris will probably hear from Rebecca about setting up a presentation to the city council.
And we can start the discussions and how that will all take place. But there's, you know, we do a lot of work and devote a lot of staff time for our interaction with the city of Earl Beach. And that would have to occur if you were to have commonalities and concurrency issues with Sebastian, too. So there's a lot at stake on both sides.
I think it would be nice if all the cities joined together on a concurrency management system. And I hope this is something in the future that we might be able to develop.
Well, actually, that's something we've looked at in the past. And one of the constraints to doing that is all using the same computer software. And that was a problem in the past. The issue of concurrency is tracking the impacts through time. When is the development approved? How do you put it on the system? How do you reflect it in your database?
When the council--
And how do you get it out? When it actually becomes part of the count? It's no longer vested, it's actually on the ground. So it's really a pretty complicated process, and it's complicated more when you have multiple jurisdictions doing the-- Actually, this is what we're going to be doing in about two weeks with school--
Yes.
School concurrency kicks in July 1st. And the biggest problem with school concurrency is there are five jurisdictions that are including building permits, approving development projects. And the school district is really the sixth jurisdiction. Well, there are five cities in the county, and there are six jurisdictions approving development projects. And the school district has the responsibility of getting all this information in, maintaining it in a database, and keeping it current. Like I said, one of the most important things is getting the impacts out of the system when projects are given a certificate of occupancy. So we're going to be getting a little experience of trying to do cooperative type of concurrency management for schools.
So you'll have all that information, Bob? And would it be easy to translate it over to the traffic concurrency management?
Well, the--
The short answer is no.
But it's possible using the same, since you've got this database you're creating now.
Actually, this is going to be, the school board is going to create and maintain a separate database. We have a computer system that's really pretty automated. Once we input data, it's connected to our permanent tracking system. So when a building permit is issued, we track the concurrency associated with that from the time we vest it on the system to the time that that permit gets a certificate of occupancy, and the impacts get taken out of the system. So it is a little more complicated. But I do want to emphasize, we have looked at coordinating in the past, and we weren't successful. But maybe with what we're doing with the schools, we can see the benefits of this coordination of all.
So I was just hoping that the commissioners here would be in support of this, if it is something that the city council, the city of Sebastian, decided they wanted to do.
Oh, I'd be in support of it, for sure, yeah.
Absolutely.
I'll help you any way I can.
Thank you.
I think it's a great idea. Anything else? Any other commissioners' matters? Planning matters?
Just a couple things. One is, I had put at your spaces up there some information from Chuck Finkler--
Right.
--on his follow-up to the last--
Yeah, that was--
--workup that we had. And I just want to point out that the color maps that are on the second page, there's information that you all have gotten before, but what Mr. Finkler's done is added some notes about where some topics, which are a pretty small scale. And he's also compiled some general information that's helpful, I think. So I wanted to make sure I got that to you all. And I thank Mr. Finkler. He's actually drafted also some best management practices that we're using in some of our review. And I guess he's been very helpful, so I want to make sure you all got that information from me. A couple other things, as Bob indicated, the school concurrency LDR changes, as you all recommended approval up the board, approved since your last meeting, and that will go into effect July 1st. Also, at next Tuesday, the board's meeting, which means the board will hold a second and should be final hearing on extending mine moratorium. We assume that that's going to be approved. The other item, one they just mentioned, to see if we have any critical dates with the summer schedule. There could be some kinds of vacations and such, but we could have difficulty doing them, and I just wanted to check that. Also, we've got two numbers going tonight, and at the next, at the next meeting on June 26th, I just wanted to check if you all see if there's anybody here, any numbers here that will not be at the next scheduled meeting, June 26th. Do you have this flag? Anybody else?
I'm sorry, what time is that on June 26th?
June 26th.
Oh, a regular meeting. Okay. Oh, it's not a workshop. Okay.
I'm the only one, yeah. That's all that I had.
Okay, thanks, sir. Any attorneys' matters?
Matt and I.
You're a good guy. Anything else? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.